Is there a possibility the health department might get notice and make them keep it wet and not have that dust kind?
I know RG has a water plant.
I know they do.
They have a water truck going there.
I've seen it work both and I've seen it not work.
Why don't you say they do get complaints and guess they never actually taken on.
And I've seen it taken, but I've also seen a lot of dust on all sorts, not just rock. I'm not picking on anybody.
Absolutely.
I'm talking about a homeowner that gave me a call and says, what can the town do about this? It's in a Heber City district. It's a whole lot, but it's in Heber City. I can, what we can do though as far as residents.
So you're trying to acquire property to hinder their use?
You call Heber City.
So you're trying to acquire the property to hinder the use?
We're not trying to bother any property.
Well, acquire it into the.
So if that was in, so it stays industrial because for whatever reason people are thinking it's all changing. I don't know what it is going to do. We're talking about the annexation tonight. If somebody else annexed and did the same thing, wouldn't those still things still apply that you're referring to? And if Heber City does it or county not?
I haven't heard any complaints from Heber City. It's from Daniels.
It's because it's in Daniels. Your neighbors are close to Daniels.
So where was Satch County?
I understand that. But you're affecting the Daniel residents by what you're building.
I don't think it was bothering anybody.
Why do you want it to be part of Daniels unless we have control over it?
So at this point, we're going to finish up the public hearing. Is there any other comments with regards to this annexation?
Well, I just don't want my property has an acre, 1.2 acres in the city already. So, I mean, if I was to annex it to anybody, it would probably be Heber City because why would I want to split my property split? Do you know what I mean?
That's a great question and tonight, there will be a night to answer that and be your satisfaction.
But I just want to make you aware of that because I didn't tell you that before, but the whole order, volume order of our property that 1.2 acres is Heber City.
Inside your fence line. Okay, any other questions?
So it seems like a big piece of the puzzle is missing. You say this in advance. This is just an annexation meeting, not a zoning meeting. But how could a property owner consider being annexed without a plan placed before them on, you know, what's going to happen? Is there going to be an agreement you're going to annex in with this certain zone? Is it going to be an agreement? Nothing's been presented to the property owners saying, this is the plan. This is why we think you ought to annex with us. That seems to be it.
Yeah, and a quick question, not to delay, but in a plan, the town can do some kind of basic infrastructure plan, but the town would be the landlord. They would know what they did and didn't want to walk within that use of the commercial use or whatever use it.
I should say a zone.
Zone, okay, I understand.
A zone.
So if that zone stayed the same and during the time that you'd have that list, the county can do all that.
But you're saying it may or may not through those.
Well, I am saying that because I haven't even, that hasn't come to us yet. You haven't discussed it. You haven't heard it. You haven't discussed it. It's premature for me to say something and then being held for the next meeting we have. You said this and I didn't even know quite what the whole circumstances was until we got to that point. You have a, Mark?
Mark McAllister, is that a resident? I kind of keep hearing the same thing and maybe I'm going to be rebutting some other words in a different way. I feel like that a lot of the property owners that are here that are in consideration of their property being annexed would like some clarification of what the intent is going to be in the end after it is annexed. That there is not going to be as a zone change or a de-zone change happen with the annexation. And I think that they would be a lot more happier property owners in support of joining if they could get some clarification from the city as to what it was going to be. And I know you can't say that you can't, right now you can't say, but I don't know the process. I don't know the timing. But I feel like you'd get more support with some kind of a plan presented and put on record and accounted for.
And I'd agree, and I think that your words are wise and it would be probably, those opportunities will be coming forward that we'll all be able to talk about. Whether we're all happy at the end. I don't know that or not. I just know that tonight, we're going to be able to answer all the questions you just brought up and others that you're probably thinking at the moment.
Kristen Vasquez, I spoke at the last meeting and I, I'm an attorney for Daniel. And so I've actually been retained to address your matter. And I haven't been retained to address this matter, but should I be retained to address this matter? I can assure you that I'm very versed in the process of annexation. And of course, you're going to have the requisite information before anything would ever happen, right? It's not, what happened to you that you just spoke about of having an agreement and then something changing? That's unacceptable behavior and I get that there's.
It happens all the time.
I get it. I get it. Trust me. So I, you know, I'm new to Utah generally speaking, but this is something that we would sit down. This is, if I understand this correctly, what I'm hearing is this is an informational public hearing and you're literally and clearly expressing your discomfort with the situation, right? Totally understood. And so with that information, we would sit down and say, okay, where's that plan on the internet? I looked it up on my phone. I found it, but I mean, maybe it wasn't easy to find, who knows? But we'll go through the plan. We'll figure out what works best. And it's the kind of thing where if it makes sense and then you have continual public input and you feel satisfied if it's, you know, these parcels or your concern about commercial or your concern about budding it, then all of that should be addressed in the master plan, in the correct process, with the information that makes the best sense for the town, right? I mean, this is, this is like step one, get information. That's what it's like step one, right? And so all of the discomfort and all of the uncertainty, that's the key, is that it's uncertain, right? But if we bring certainty and you guys get what you want in that certainty. For example, if you came in and you're like, okay, I've continual use and this is kind of what I want to do and he's like, that's fine. I'm great with that.
But if I build any new buildings and they're getting the restriction on that.
But what, what would happen, like hypothetically speaking, is that if your property was brought in and continual use and you're like, hey, here's my master plan, put it out on the table. They're like, oh, here's our master plan. Where does it work and where does it doesn't work?
I've already been throughout the county.
Right, but this is the city, right? And so you have to sit down and say.
No, I, because my property is in Wasatch County and an acre on the northern border is in Heber City already. If, if anything, why would I go into Daniels and leave my property divided?
In two places. Right. And then that would be something that you'd be like, hey, I don't, I don't like this. This doesn't work for me at all. And these are reasons why.
That's why I wonder why they didn't consider our property.
Right.
It seems weird to me and it seems where the, where the Wasatch County, they, they don't care that there's an item there.
But I think, I think we just have to remember, right? So like Daniel and like I said, I'm speaking as a citizen and not as their attorney, except I'm the panel for this exact moment. But it's, so they're probably thinking, here, this is my concern as Daniel Town. And you're thinking, this is my concern as a neighbor, right? And so, and then you're thinking, this is my concern with my property. And so everybody's in their own space, right? And the only way it's going to happen is if we have everybody in the same place and you start thinking as a group, right? This is the group of Daniel and this is what works for us and we got to increase commercial because we're not going to thrive. And we've got to protect our land because I bought it like 10 years ago or 30 years ago. This is my family property and I'm not about to divide it. And help me understand why I shouldn't separate it. So this is just step one. That's all it is.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
We have two attorneys here. We're probably going to get two opposing opinions. It's my understanding that when a city wants to, when the city does not have a petitioner for an annexation, they have to be providing services to that area in order by state law to petition for that land. If they're providing services to that area, then they can do the petition. I think it's worth you looking to see if you can even do what you're doing without providing services already to the area that you petition. If you have a petitioner, I believe that whole thing changes.
Right, there's totally.
Just my understanding.
And you're right, but there's two, I think maybe you brought up, there's two different standards of, you know.
But right now, there's no petitioner. It's the city wanting to annex.
Right. And that's what.
And I believe they have to be providing services to the area they want to annex in order to even consider moving ahead.
Yeah, why would we want to annex into what we already have? They've got some Heber City.
But my point is I don't think, I don't think they can make.
Mr. Nelson is saying that. You know, without services being readily provided, he feels that they're not, the town is not meeting the statutory requirements. And I'm not here to answer that question and I'm not here to answer like why would you annex this property.
No, and I raised it just because I think it ought to be.
Addressed.
Addressed, not by you, but by Heber City.
And I think my statement is only like, is only to get up here and say, look, you know, if you're going to be a successful town with having people thriving and making a lot of money and then living peacefully or what, you know, whatever your mission is for the town, you better just work together, right? And this is only informational and the best part about it is all of the fear and all of the unknowns and all of the comments are absolutely perfect. Because what you're going to do is take those comments and then come up with a response that's informational and then you just keep working with that, working with that until everybody feels that either we're meeting statutory requirements or that it works for us or it doesn't work for us. So I think we just have to remember that this is just, hey, what's going on? How do you feel about it? It's all that's happening. So that's it. Thanks.
Any last questions? No, shall I entertain a motion to move the floor to table?
Shall we move?
Motion to close second. All struck. Motion second on favor. Aye. Take the motion to go back into regular session.
Shall we move?
Motion. Back to the second on favor. Aye. Go back into regular session. Item number four, which would be business license applications. I believe we have one renewal, which would be Ryan Simpson fans.
Wouldn't that be nice if I didn't have to go to work?
Okay, so we have an application for a renewal for Simpson fans. It's a renewal. We have again, no complaints, sign complaints on this. Question for anybody?
Is this a renewal once a year or is this going to be?
Once a year. Yeah, we go in, it's two year, but we never pass on it. On another file.
That's it on that, correct? So item number five would be approved fireworks restriction, which we have from year to year. We have to renew it each year. I believe it is the same as last year with regards to the boundaries. And so I have, I believe we approved it last month, but we did not have the resolution round out. So we'll have to read that if it's approved or not approved. It's DR 2018-0709C. Effective, uh, second day would be July 9th, 2018. Short title resolution to enter a memorandum of understanding agreement with Wasatch County Fire District for mitigation of cost in fighting wildland fire in Daniels. And this actually, I think is wrong. It's number seven. Is that right, Mary? Uh, this one happened to be with the county fire versus I believe the town fire restriction.
Should be doing the fireworks first.
Fireworks.
Oh, seven oh nine C.
Okay. I'll start back over with the resolution number DR 2018-0709A. Effective date, July 9th, 2018. Short title fireworks and open flame restrictions. Purpose to establish a policy of fireworks and open flame restrictions during hazardous fire conditions from now through September 18th. Resolution where the Daniel Town Council, as duly elected government body of the town of Daniel, mindful of its capacity and duty to care for public safety, the Daniel Town Council declared that the danger of wildland fire is extreme within the town of Daniel from now to September 30th, uh, 2018. And hereby declare that the fireworks or any other open flame shall be prohibited in all areas south of 3,000 south in the town of Daniel. The council further states that a person who negligently, recklessly, or intentionally causes or spreads a wildfire, a wildland fire shall be liable for the cost of suppressing that wildland fire regardless of whether the fire begins on private land, public land, land owned by the state, federal land, or tribal land. Cheryl, entertain a motion on that resolution with regards to fireworks.
One, one.
Okay.
What was the boundary on that? Was that south of 3,000 south?
South of 3,000 and then we used to have a mill, but then in Heber City, we've got that other site, so. Motion to approve. Motion to approve? For a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion to approve.
Do you want to discuss? Miss discussion.
I did discuss. We didn't want to discuss if we did or didn't want to have fireworks.
I just wanted to, because of House Bill 38, I wanted to include a map with that. That's all.
Sorry, Russ, that, uh, we will include the map as. Next one would be the approved, uh, tax rate. Yep. And that would be that our dollar amount stayed the same. Our rate changed. So with, uh, within our county, is hereby resolved that the governing body of Daniel Town approves the following property tax rates and revenues for the year 2018. The line item in our budget was, uh, for general operations was 40,000. Uh, we kept it the same and half for the last four years, but the rate itself changed and it's point 000606. I'm not sure exactly what it was before, but the dollar amount was exactly the same as the 40,000, so.
I believe it was 676 for prior year.
Say it again.
I think the prior year was 676.
Okay.
So we went down.
Went down, yeah.
Pass ups, huh?
This resolution is adopted after proper notice and hearing in accordance with the UCA 59-2, 919 and shall be forwarded to the county auditor and the tax commissioner in accordance with the UCA 59-2-913 and 29-2-920. Cheryl, entertain a motion to approve the tax.
I make, I make quick a motion to approve the adopted tax rate. DR 2018-0709.
Check. First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item number seven, approval of inner local wildland fire agreement, which we did sign on to before the big, big fire, which is. I'll read that resolution as well. It would be DR 2018-0709C. Resolution to enter a memorandum of understanding agreement with Wasatch County Fire District for mitigation of cost in fighting wildland fires in Daniel. To cooperate with Wasatch County Fire District in joint agreements with the Utah Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands in finding firefighting efforts in Daniel Town. Resolution where as Wasatch County Fire District has agreed to a participation commitment to provide initial attack for wildland fires within the boundaries of Daniel Town and the county fire district has agreed to provide fire protection services within Daniel Town. The Daniel Town Council, as the governing municipality body for the town of Daniel, desires to enter to the memorandum of understanding agreement with the county fire district in addition to the warrant of agreement we need to with the Utah State Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands. For helping this, for help in the suppression of wildland fires within Daniel Town and agree to all the terms and conditions set forth in the memorandum of understanding agreement. See a tax signed agreement that you have these here to as. Confirm anybody?
Motion to approve.
Your motion, you have a second. Your motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor? Aye. Wildland fire. Resolution approved. Planning department report violation and enforcement. So the time over.
Okay. I did not get this email permission to be put into the public meeting, but I just wanted you guys to have this. I've taken the last name off so that, so that they're not identified until we get permission, but that was back and forth, some conversations I had with some folks in the town. That's just one of the many. So here's the planning report. There's a planning report. As you go through that, I'll pass out this letter. This is a letter that I sent to Staker Parsons regarding the mass mining permit request from the Division of Oil and Gas. I received a response from them.
You did?
Yes, that they received my comments.
That's fast.
Are there any questions on the planning report? None? Perfect. Those complaints at the bottom, we've just received verbal. Nothing signed?
Uh, Robert, can I mention something?
What?
So I received one that may have not been received from other folks, but my discussion was there's that Nike rental, absolutely does not have caretaker. That Nike rental individual, person called to be, is now will be, uh, both with license plates, people, timing, and will have all the criteria, uh, that would fall under Nike rentals out apparently, uh, the caretaker. Caretaker would be caretaking the out, out of the fields if that wasn't the caretaker, not the house. The house has been rented a thousand a night, anybody, everyone for weddings, wedding assemblies, uh, nighting sleepover and weekly sleepover. So, um, that's what I got today from an individual.
You got that from, sorry, I'm unclear the path of your.
Uh, a neighbor that's on that road that, um, lives in that area called me to complain about all those things I just mentioned. So he will take that upon himself to get me.
The evidence.
The evidence that can require the town to be able to make an action.
Super.
That was what I started to ramble with.
Perfect.
A lot more clear.
I find things trying to mix and it just takes a question to clear.
I got it. I thought they were trying to sound like they were legal the way you were saying that.
Well, we, we looked at it a month ago and then because of caretaker, that was an issue that might or might not make it legal. In fact, we looked at it and we thought that maybe why it might be permissible. I'm understanding now that there is no caretaker and that caretaker may be the person harvesting the acres.
So does the town, is there, does the town have a form letter or application thing that can be filled out by town employees to report for the council on, on problems such as that you have listed on the bottom of there? To fill out to start the process of getting either legal or whatever, whatever it takes to get certain things to stop happening. You know, we can verbally talk to the town council, but our understanding is in order to proceed any further than a verbal conversation, we need to have a signed document, whether it is from the people or on petition, that. I mean, do they actually have a form that we can fill out? Residents can fill out?
No, usually that just comes in the form of an email or a written. Because what that does is when somebody makes a complaint in writing, then when the town pursues that, that person becomes a witness. And so they'll be called into court if it goes to court.
So there's not official document with it?
There's not an official doc, our official document goes to the, to the person in violation. We have an official document for that.
And Eric would write that pertaining to the needs of that or the situation of that individual?
So each code would be different. And so I reference that in, in that letter that goes out. We've adopted that one, but not one that comes in.
So in some of the items that we've discussed, such as, and you also, so we just need, so we, we need to just have a list with names on it and say we complained about this. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Such as, such as happening on such a, such address and.
Request the town take that.
Yeah.
And then that'll come for the council, then they'll direct me as the code enforcement to go investigate that and move forward. And then come back here with whatever I find and then they'll decide if that's, they should pursue that illegal if it can't be resolved. It's my understanding.
Any other questions?
Okay, this is a note. If you guys didn't have any other questions on there. Uh, I've got on the notes, the right of ways, all of the right of ways in the town has had one herbicide application. So if they're, we down on the road, they've been hit by herbicide. We do have some fast growing thistle that have come back up. And so it's an ongoing thing. And also July 26th, I don't know if anybody's interested in biocontrol. But the biocontrol, Amber Bendenhall, they call her the bug lady, she'll be going out to Tendik to be getting nap weed beetle. And it's, and they'll meet down there at the Tendik High School on July 26th. If anybody's interested in getting those. They fill out some paperwork and then you plant them around where, where the habitat is. And they try and keep that so where the bugs will continue to feed and they'll be able to use that closer to gather bugs. So they don't want any collapse. They only want enough bugs that it controls it. So if all the weeds are gone, you don't want to call any collapse of bugs done. So that's, that's, they try and hold that. So there's, that's why the paperwork, if anybody's interested. It's called for a bug.
Question, Eric. Is the planning meeting still on schedule to be held next Wednesday?
Yes.
So we'll need to see if it's rescheduled or canceled. I've, I've just planned my vacation and I would like to be present.
Yeah, we will be holding that meeting.
Okay.
We have, uh, the Armstrong, we've made it past a public hearing, so that will be in that meeting.
Great.
So yep, we will be having that. That's all. Okay. That enough?
Yep.
All right.
Daniel, municipal water issues necessary?
We got the manager here, so he can take.
Should I get the water to everybody, I guess?
Everybody's still getting water, man. So, uh, yeah, we're poking along. There was a lot of overuse in this last month.
Municipal?
Yep. And I can't imagine why, but anyway. So we'll be working on the collection of that. And then we have a, we have one individual party that is due by the end of this month. And we'll, you know, follow them at least a week before that and see what the intention is there. Not that it'll be a disconnect.
Yep. So do we have a disconnect right now or are they back on?
They're back on.
Okay. Working through the process. I assume.
And this time at the 24 hour mark, we'll let.
What's been made about playing this plane that, uh, that will happen.
You'd assume since they're not here, they didn't want to come to the council?
For some reason, no, I would.
Do you do water sample, collections from residents from time to time? Can I get a?
You won't.
Collections.
From you?
Do you? I, I get an order in the mornings quite often.
Is it pouring in order?
No. It's unpleasant.
Have anything to do with your water?
Yes.
So I'm telling you what, Ron, I've been drinking one time a long time ago, man, I wasn't quite getting what you have, but you know, I don't know how many gallons you'll take it out and how many gallons of chlorine opened every closet in the house and just did that big flush too. Maybe you've already done that or not, I don't know.
Well, I'm on the city pretty water collect.
Oh.
So.
There you go.
I should be coordinated all the way through and I'm wondering why I get odd orders.
Actually, Ryan's outfit does the monthly collections, the monthly reports and stuff now. I got too busy to try to keep up on them all.
Swing by your office and get one of them.
Yeah, we can figure something out.
They can just do a sample at your house.
Yeah, they'll come get a sample at your house.
At 6:00 AM?
Whenever, leave the door open. Much for breakfast.
It's usually like 5:00 or 6:00 AM.
You got an outside hose, babe, don't you? Have an outside hose, babe?
Yeah.
Well, I was just wondering, is your order inside or?
I haven't noticed it outside because I don't really drink up hose out often.
So do you think we ought to pull that sample inside?
Is there a reason to do it inside or out?
Well, yeah, if you don't, if you don't get it outside.
If we're investigating something, I'd like to pull one from each.
Right.
I need to know where the problem, if the problem's not in the main, it's in the lab, I need to know where it starts.
Yeah.
Good, you want to know that at six AM?
Can I just, I mean, I don't trust it, I don't know what I said.
I don't agree, is, is in order to do the proper testing, it has to be down there from the bottles, whichever lab they're using the water has to be in their bottle.
So we're using Tim Textville.
Yeah, Huber City used to just drop one off, Robert, and I'd take, get a sample first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
Put it on the porch, we'll come get it.
Well, that depends on what we're sampling for. Different samples, some we can do that, some we can't.
Oh.
And so it depends on what it is we're sampling for, so I can get with him, we can figure out what to do.
All right.
Get ready, just some testing, uh, right away, somebody taking a sample that I'm not to touch the pot.
Well, so that's where I say there's some samples, metals is one that I've seen Huber City do that and it's really hard to screw up metals. Unless you like drop, unless you drop the quarter, the penny in the bottle, it's not going to be that far off. You know, the, the bacteria on the other can, if you want to sample that very carefully, get that on ice under the lab immediately, so it depends on what you're sampling.
I have a question on this over usage because for some reason I'm getting over usage for the last three months and I guess I'm used to Boots and Darwin that would come out and say, there's a problem the first month. So I don't know if other people are not, unless you're reading your bill and seeing, I, I'm just trying to figure out, how can we go a better way of letting us know where and where's it going and how's it, you know? Cause they would usually come out and say, you got over usage water, let's check your things or something. So like I told Eric, I says, we have a problem, I'm not paying over hundreds of dollars a month for water, you know? I don't care.
No, I can't believe.
So we don't know, why, so if it's happening in other places, I'm just wondering what.
Yeah, I didn't know what the policy was, I'd ask Gary.
Gary?
Just, sorry, Shelley was just talking with regards to overages and, and, and the next month or knowing the first month that there was an overage, to maybe see what that overage might or might not have been, was that your question, Shelley?
Yeah, well, I was just saying, how is these other people knowing? I'm knowing because I'm looking, like I said, but I noticed for three months I've had overage and I, and Eric's went out and he's looked, but, and I guess, like I said, I was just figured that the water company would come out and say, you, we, we, there's a problem, is there a problem, let's make sure it's, see if it's on your side or if it's on our side. I guess, like I said, I'm used to Darwin and Boots that would come out and say, you're over, we have a problem. And I know these guys are busy and that, but maybe these other people, if, if they say they have a lot of overage, maybe they don't know that they're having this, if, but it's nice to know it's not just me that's having this.
The policy has been, as long as I've been doing this, wait before we ever come to town, was that, uh, we used to only bring meters through the summer months and then if you come to town and find out they're very permanent, we'd bring meters every month. And so when we ever get flagged, somebody has a real higher usage than what they had the previous thirty days, we will look into that. Or the customer will get ahold of us and say, well, how, without mind my water bill is. So for instance, we had one this past month, it was a hundred forty-seven thousand gallons in a period of at least thirty days or less.
That wasn't me.
So you contacted a person, uh, you jumped back with me Sunday afternoon, you said, uh, my landscaper actually found a, an irrigation or a valve on his sprinkling system, this type of container water that was broken, leaking. Well, I can tell you, it doesn't take very much time to run through a lot of gallons of water, keep it out of your direct drain. And the problem is, it's down Daniel, most water goes straight down. So yeah, and so what we try to do is on that notification, we give them that, that month to fix that, that leak, because they don't know about the leak, we don't know about the leak until Kim goes out and does the readings. And so we figured that that's a fair way that could give the old property owner and the town, you know, the chance to see what's so wrong with it. But if you, you're allowed twenty thousand gallons and if you come in at twenty-one, twenty-two thousand gallons, we're not going to jump on that and say, oh my word, they got to make the leak somewhere. Because what happens this time of year is people turn their water on, you know, and use outside watering, say the irrigation system broke down and we get a really high usage. So I don't know what, I don't know typically without, so Kim, how much, how much you're over, how much did you over?
I'd say it's almost forty thousand.
There's no complaint department allowed.
So there's really a chance that you've got something that's not going to shut off, something that's going to shut off. Unless you're bleeding holes, huh?
Yeah, we don't water on the corner at all.
You don't have a toilet running?
Okay, you turn everything off and then listen at your valve and see if you can hear anything glowing.
We can have the customer call us, we'll go down there, we'll, uh, we'll say, okay, you got everything shut off that you're aware of? I said, yep. And we'll look at the meter and the meter's still spinning. And you shut the valve off and it quits, which is what you expect to see. So from point A, the output of that meter, somewhere on your system, you have a leak. And we've seen it from many, from no freeze hydrants to pipes just rotting in the ground to.
Yeah.
Whatever. So it's not that we're not actively looking at that, but unless it comes in as a drill and using forty, we probably should have.
Well, we used to have the program where I could go on a look and see where it was being used. So apparently that doesn't work anymore, trying long on and that's not.
What, what was being used?
The water log usage.
Oh, you mean that comes in.
On, on our website, you can type in your number and it'll show you.
Where, when we were using Excel, we're going through Excel.
Yeah.
That was posted online where the users could see their account and since we've gone straight from the reader into the accounting software, that's not been updated.
But any, but on your bill that shows your usage and what your usage is on monthly previous usage, so that's really flat.
So maybe I can, do we have the ability to look at, could I kind of get a copy of when that use is?
For?
Do, do we have that ability? That's still there.
Where do I go?
Cap.
Boy, that way I'm like, that's bad. This guy's been practicing.
She communicates that software wherever it's for us. So she's the one that, and, and if we wanted to instigate that again, then all you have to do is.
Add the line item. Well, I don't, I, I used to type into our website, I don't know how it did that or, you used to be able to enter right on the website your number off your bill.
Just bring up your, your.
Yeah, and that doesn't work anymore.
Well, it used to be on the map, on, on the map for you and I on our phone and if you're clicking with the pull-up to the latest meter reading.
Yeah.
On any of the meters for those that had it, but that was all done through a Google doc, but now that we're using, going straight to Clarus to Google, that, that spreadsheet isn't going to be anymore. We simplified the process, which was a great thing in a lot of his.
Dude, you surprise how many people, especially during the summer months, that they really know what they're doing, they, they know where their water is, whether it's forty thousand, whether it's thirty thousand, or whether it's sixty thousand. They know, you know, when it gets, when it gets up there, we, we like to put a red flag on and say, maybe you want to check this or that. And Kim and I went out, how many times, how many times, Ken didn't count how many times that we've gone out and walked lines where they think their water is, where they don't think where their water is. John, he was involved in that many years ago, remember?
Yeah, he's got the best witch in town.
So, well, it's like this, I mean, if, if you want to pay the bill, we'll take the money, you know what I'm saying? But if you have a question that it's, that it's way over than what you think, I mean, if the kid goes out and turns the garden hose on and leaves it for an hour, uh, that's a little long.
I think you get to.
He can fill a five, five gallon bucket out of a water hose in about thirty-five seconds.
About twenty-four hours?
So forty, forty thousand about when that triggers off the vent?
So I did it with these guys for a long time, I haven't in, in a few years, but it's hard to figure out when it's a leak, especially this time of year, because, you know, if the irrigation goes down, everybody's water use goes through the roof. Well, nine out of ten were because the irrigation was down, the air gated, one out of ten had a leak, but you can't identify which ones. And so this time of year, water use is so variable, it, I mean, I think they're doing everything they can, but it's really hard to catch that trend. There's some homes that, you know, use three to five thousand gallons, seven thousand gallons is a whole, you know, huge amount of water, we need to go talk to them. There's other homes that are sixty, seventy thousand gallons and that's wrong. Uh, one thing we did with the new meters is they have a leak detector, so that's one thing that goes off when we read. In the winter, I think that works really well. In the summer, there's so many swamp coolers and air conditioners and other things running. The last year you and I did it, I think we had an average of like ten of those going off, none of them were leaks, they just, the water doesn't shut off.
Really?
It triggers the alarm. And so it makes it really hard to find out when somebody's just doing something a little different versus when there's actually a leak that, you know, they need to look at.
Which is like marriage day, one of the biggest culprits that, that I've seen in the years that I've been, is what? Oh, I don't have any work done anywhere, I, I have no idea.
One might be the ice machine been off.
You got the ice room you're walking to? With regards to Daniel municipal, is there anything else? If not, uh, Storm Haven, we want Storm Haven.
Just, uh, we're still struggling with the county getting them radio reads. We're finding out that the existing sensor that was in the office, uh, the box, well, whatever.
Talking at the county.
We found that, that, that was a pattern. And, uh, so we've got two of those on order. We're also trying to get a meter at the Storm Haven on the tank, because, uh, we don't think that'd be for, uh, too many out of all reads.
We have the meter, we just haven't installed it. But what went wrong. What went wrong at the county was this little box that transferred from the meter, uh, it creates a signal that goes to the meter and that box was bad and we looked at that box about two weeks ago, I guess it was, the guy didn't have his spare one, so he's going to bring one to the Storm Haven and they had your county.
And the replacement that we put in the existing meter went bad.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Do you mean to, do you mean you to try and correct that?
So, so what I'm trying to tell the town council is we are still trying to get the radio read down the county on two meters.
I know, don't give up. We're that close.
What happened is we installed a new meter and, uh, on hold to some point in time, there'd be small, small hole in the shaft and the pillar that turned from the flow goes and that broke.
It's.
No wider than.
Fifty cent or ring.
That's exactly right. But little did we know, until we went in, it was actually. So the guy, the guy replaced it, he's got her up and fixed, so I don't know.
Any, any questions from the council for either one of, uh, Daniel or Storm Haven? If not, we'll move on to item number eleven, which would be approval of council meeting minutes for June fourth, two thousand and twelve.
I, I didn't know, so where are we at? What's the grant money for, uh, for?
Well, by the beat of the world, we're, we're still waiting for the cash and it should be what made it into the month.
That's the last I heard, I don't know if you have updates or not, but we've submitted everything we can submit, including the environmental, which wasn't due for a while, but we're trying to get ahead of the game. So it's all submitted, we're waiting on them to approve the environmental and then they need to get funded, which is always the catch twenty-two.
So it's a good chance that we won't have any funding in time this year if you want to see what that.
I think we'll have funding in time to do something. I'm worried with the economy and the way everybody's backed up and busy, if our grant money will allow us to do anything is false, I'm thinking that from a budget standpoint, we would be better off to let them, to, to allow them to do it first thing in the spring.
So what's our timeframe on that? Is that a year?
We have eighteen months from when we're funded. If we can spend more than fifty percent of it within twelve months before the next funding cycle, we can apply for the next funding cycle. If we haven't spent half of it, we can't do that. So my goal, bit bigger than the spend it in eighteen months, my goal is to have enough of it spent down that we can plan next year.
Just quick before we move on to that, twelve hundred west, what, what are we doing there? I, I got a big mistake for, uh, for the.
Trying to get the gas line marked to confirm what we've been told.
I don't know.
The, the, the.
For death.
Trying to confirm the.
Southfield.
So you're gonna say something?
Trying to confirm the location of that gas line to make a final determination that there's no change orders and that we're good to go.
Okay.
So that was what the new, new call-in was, was that not all the utilities got marked? Either not all the utilities got marked or there's no gas line there.
One of the two, huh?
Was, was the council in favor of spending that hundred thousand dollars?
Well, I think we're waiting to hear back from Matt on his final, because Ryan had met with him that week, we met last night, and he was still, he was going to finalize, finalize what he was going to give us.
There's one more hookup down that.
I think we're good there.
Well, we're, we're coming in a catch twenty-two there with the, with the bank of the problem.
Which has received, they have their excavation agreement. So they're moving forward.
So if the line wasn't getting extended, what is the opposite?
Buckets.
Wow.
Old fashioned like buckets.
Well, we return money, that'd do well.
Yeah, but, but the town didn't say is that run a half mile, quarter mile, two miles to, you know, hookup is, that's what they get, but, uh.
Make my life easy, just fund it.
So, so, and I know it's, it's been talked about, but probably not the council, is the fact that at one point in time when they applied by the hydrant, uh, it was not a possibility to go across that Southfield Road and have an easement down the front of that property to their property with a, with a.
On their side.
On, on their side, which would be on the west side of the road. My understanding and having communications with them and then talking with the bankers is that could be a possibility that that easement would be granted. Now it's just a matter of do we want to do some kind of diversion of that if the extension of the line doesn't happen?
I don't know, cause you're going to run into other easements on that side.
Sure.
And I don't know that they're going.
Neither side's very easy to work with, or, or, or to.
Yeah.
A line out, let's put it that way.
Well, it's not that, they have an easement on the other side, that they may now not let us get into.
But, but you see what I'm saying, that is, if this doesn't happen on the extension, how are we going to, how are we going to provide that service?
Yeah.
So that's something's going to have to be finalized in, in a short period of time if they've already got the excavation prepared.
So you see the one just down, oh, it's already framed. Their way is.
When you got this, you can do anything you want.
We need to make a decision quickly, but, uh, we've heard multiple rumors about locations of the gas line and if we get out there and start, I don't want to authorize them to get going, get out there and find out that we have a ten thousand dollar, twenty thousand dollar change order because the gas line's not where we're supposed to.
Right.
And unfortunately, our franchise agreement doesn't allow me to call and just say it was the gas line. So I need to be careful before we do that. I, I think we're okay, but thinking we're okay and knowing we're okay are two different things.
When does that agreement come up, so we can put that in agreement?
Don't know, but when it does, we'll make sure we add it.
We don't even have franchise agreement with gas company.
No, we don't, but.
So as of.
When we get one, we'll add that.
Yeah.
As of the last meeting, does it that, you know, that they are going to support the monies? Just because it was stated otherwise that it wasn't sold?
That's better, you back down?
Yeah, that was, there's all sorts of rumors, you hear a bunch of them.
That's why I was asking.
I have a free question, I confirm that, yeah, that conversation about that. Would, would it be wise to have them either accept or deny that they're going to take service before a building permit's offered, the county issue?
He, with the building permit, he has a well permit, it's already, he's already converted the water. What he's, he's offering to do is take that money from the well that would cost him to drill the well and apply it towards running the line down. So excess of thirty thousand dollars, so that's quite a, quite a chunk of change.
So basically, he, it was authorized with him having water one way or the other. So it's not like, it's, it's not that we authorized a house without, out water.
He had the shares to turn in one way or the other from the well or.
Yeah, so, so it's.
And he, he turned it in to the state, yeah, he did.
That just seems weird, we have to sit and limbo back and forth on his part.
Right, no, he's been very good to work with, but he, he deserves an answer and we He's been very good to work with, but he, he deserves an answer, and we need to.
And very the gas line, that's what tells us that for about three or four weeks.
The last two weeks, been the gas line issue, and, and the contractor's supposed to give back to me with a fencing quote, but I'm not, I'm less worried about that being a huge number than I am the gas line.
So what is the fencing dilemma on that piece of what we're talking about? Are we moving the fence? Is that what you're going to pull for?
I've, I've asked for direction from council on what to do about it. I've asked the contractor.
What'd they tell you?
They haven't asked, yes. I've asked the contractor for a quote if we were to remove and replace that new fence that's in the way. What it would be, and I don't have that number tonight, he was supposed to get it to me before this meeting, and I have it five minutes ago, but not making it. But I'm anticipating it to not be a big number.
It's hard.
It's hard.
Right, that's the council, sounds like.
Correct.
But doesn't that, doesn't that fence removal have to do with the gas line possibly?
Well, no, the, the plan for the water line is to stay right up against the asphalt. And the new fence that was installed is springing in the right of way, goes right up against the asphalt, so we.
Either way, the fence is coming out, gas light or not?
Yes, just to put the water line in, the fence is in the way. The, the question I have for the council is, if we remove the fence, do we put it back? And if we put it back, do we put it back in our right of way, or do we put it back on the right of way line where it should have been built?
But wasn't part of the issue on his property, is it could be on to the west side of the road?
Well, it's, they, they actually, there, there's survey stakes that he paid for, there's, we can tell. They clearly show the location of the road, and then the thirty foot off, you know, the thirty foot easement. And the fence is in that thirty foot easement.
I think you have the same issue with the whole town, everybody's property goes to the.
Yeah, my property goes to the center of the road.
Right.
My neighbors come to the center of the road, can I do anything about?
Well, yes, that's what we're talking about, the right of way versus the property.
Some folks are a lot stronger feeling about it.
And so I don't, you know, nobody's arguing that the description goes to the center of the, well, quarter section, the section line, that's where the property is. But then there's a thirty foot easement, so thirty feet off of that, and there's stakes in the ground, and the fence is built in the way. And well, well out into the right of way. There, there's two cases for that, in my opinion. There's, there's one that, you know, a lot of fences got built years ago, and I don't know how they got, maybe it was there before the easement was in place, maybe the fence, you know, I, I don't know how the fence got there, but it's been there since before we were town, and we're not going to do it. Then it's not, you know, if, if we have to deal with one, we got to go deal with all that. There's another case of new things being built in the right of way. So they weren't there before, and now, twenty eighteen, somebody's decided to install something new in our, in the right of way, and I think those need to be handled. Um, and, and so there's, there's a lot of old stuff that's in the way, and then there's this new fence that's really in the way.
Now, we can put the water line in, look the other side of the fence then, I mean, that, that area, you can put the fence back up?
The fence kind of has an act, it has a diagonal, so we're going to go right, we have to, we have to move all the posts up.
So go right over the fence, go right over the top of the wall?
So if we put it backward, is the fence will go over the top of the water line?
We got to go back. I mean, if you got to repair, that means you got to tear down the fence, you got to replace it again. And how much do you guys want to fix the water line?
Yeah.
Eight feet, six feet?
Yeah, eight, eight to ten feet, it'd be perfect, you think we've done it last, like, you know.
The one caveat, our one of the caveats has been nothing's supposed to be.
So that's the question.
Just take them out and put it back, and keep our right of way open for some back, probably along, which is probably offset of my question. So that's your question for this evening, do you have an answer tonight?
Oh, so is that an actual fence?
And does that just go with that?
Oh, is that.
Have you posted part twelve posts, maybe at eight feet, ten posts?
Yeah, I don't know. It's about a dozen. And, and that was changing for a while, but on the order of a dozen. So about, we're talking about.
And what kind of fence is it?
Right now, it's just posts, eight way posts, about every ten feet.
We'll just be cut out for the next meeting, just to be sure it's going to be settled by then.
I think we're going to need, I think we, we need a solution, we need a resolution to tell the contractor yes or no, and what to do before our next meeting.
Just direct someone from council?
Yeah.
It's going to be a resolution, I think, just direction.
Well, I think, uh, getting the fence out of the right of way is going to be within the code, I don't think we need a resolution.
Right.
But the issue becomes, and I think Ryan said it that very good, is the town pay for that to be rebuilt? Clearly, the fence is coming out.
If, if the water line goes in, the fence is coming down, and the question is, who puts it back and where?
Well, just as a comment, uh, you could fully put a ten mile water line in.
Question for paying for.
We don't want to do it twice.
And, and so then realistically, the bankers could be requesting water first, uh, even within thirty days possibly. Is there going to, wonder if it prefat, precast, or it could go very fast.
Has there been an instance in our town that we have put anything back in the right of way?
Yes, no. We've rebuilt fences, we've taken things out, and we've been, generally, if, if things are okay, we put it back. But if, that's what I'm saying, if, that's, the council has to decide here, is the council.
That's why you see the road going, and they call the road, the reason why it is, because they're skewed on the grid where the fence can, shouldn't be, blah, blah, blah. So even before we become town, the county refused to improve the road because of that very circumstance, you know?
Same scenario.
It's a little give and take, I'm going to party there.
But if you're saying down the street, that's never happened, and now all of a sudden you allow it to happen, you just set a precedent, and everybody's going to want their fences on top of these tents.
Well, we have some that are out, these ones are still down.
Like I said, I've kind of put them in two categories, there's fences that are out there, and they've been there for, I don't know how long, forever, you know, for, forever, that I think are in one group. There's new things being built right of way that I think fall into a different class.
Yeah. And I get that on every complaint, or they are, I'll talk about that, we'll talk about you, but here's the code.
Those are the tough ones.
Here's the code, this is what you got to do. I'm heading there next.
You're next.
So. I think if the town pays for it, it'll go back on the property where it should go. If, if he wants to encroach in the right of way, I say it's on him. And I'm not saying we won't go back in and tear it down again, but if he agrees to put it on the property, then I think the town could probably help come out, move it over there. Depending.
I agree with that.
Depending on what price we give back, Brian.
Yeah, well, like I said, the fence I'm anticipating is going to be a fairly, you know, I, I said budgeted five thousand dollars, I think it's going to be less than that. But I, I'm.
I don't, I don't.
I'm not giving back to you.
I don't see a problem with the town pitching in to do that, the materials are, it's just labor of moving it, so. And I think if they, if he's agreeable to that, that it goes back on the line, then I think the town maybe, uh, but I'm just going to go with that.
So we're, for the bankers, the option of scrapping the load and supplying money on that side is not an option?
I don't know if it's an option, we have, we did those easements on that side. And our last easement that we crossed with a certain company didn't go so well. So I'm not sure that they want to share an easement with us down that other side.
Well, I would go with that, uh, myself, that, uh, if it goes back in the easement, that it came out of Omar, and it goes aside, if the town can pay for that, then I can, I can communicate that to them, and try to, you know, cheat back.
Second.
I will do that.
So you, so, so we're saying we're okay with things being built on the right of way?
No. No, we're saying, we're saying that, uh, if the town pays part, it's going to go back.
Right.
And if he decides to pay for it and wants it out front, or excuse me, if he wants it out front, he would be paying for it.
That's the part I guess I'm questioning, so.
Back on the property, and further off, that where it should be, the town would pay for it. If he wants it back in the right of way, then.
You'll have a pile of posts in there.
Yeah, well, well, yeah, if, if we want to relocate it correctly, we'll, we'll help them pay for that.
I guess I.
But if he wants to put it back in the right of way, are we okay with?
No, we're not.
So, so.
So our option is, we will help you finance your fence on the, on the right of way. If you don't want it, it's to help, we won't. But that's where we're leaving that. If you try and construct it back in the right of way, we'll have other issues.
Right.
Yeah, that, that is.
That's a clarification, that, that's the part that somehow I missed, sorry.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good now.
That's the part I just missed too, was when you said back on the right of way, off of the right.
If he wants it somewhere other than that line, then that's up to him.
So it can't be on the right of way, not an option.
No, it's against code.